They sound even better than I thought. Can I have a motion to convene a post session?
Show of.
Second. Is there a second? No.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose no. I say aye. All right.
Um.
Yes. Order today is Wednesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty five. It is six thirty. They sound even better than I thought. Can I have a motion to convene a post session?
Show of.
Second. Is there a second? No.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose no. I say aye. All right.
Um.
Yes.
Sorry to have to repeat this guys, but we're back on the open meeting platform. On item number one during closed session, a vote was taken. This was a motion to to direct James Callahan, one of our solicitors who's on the phone up there, to file a motion to modify the consent order on the Thomas property. As I described to you earlier, the the site plan that was contained in the 2018 consent agreement was not the same as the site plan of the as-built. And because that that site is governed under a consent agreement, we have to file a motion to modify. Didn't strike me as a terribly huge deal. And that motion to direct James to do that was unanimous. On item two, we got an update on the 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 wall by Mansion Beach. The the Andersons, the property owners of Plat 3 lot 128, have moved the wall to the satisfaction of the town's conditions. The the town manager has been up there a couple of times. Mike Shea from Public Works has been up there a couple of times. And that's all, I think, I think good news at the end of a very, very long road. So is there any public comment? Can I have a motion to seal the minutes, please?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, the ayes have it. Is there any public comment tonight? Who would like to go first?
Good night, everybody.
Identify yourself. Make sure your green light is on.
Carlos Salinas, Cornack Road. I come before you as a member of the Conservation Commission, but not in representation of the Conservation Commission. We just met yesterday. And it refers to correspondence that you will that you have received that's on the agenda. And that relates to the Black Island Club CRMC application that's dated September 9. And it aims to have an expansion of its facilities in type 1 waters. So initially, immediately, there are two problems with that. One is they're talking about a future expansion when they're already they have already incurred such expansion. And secondly, it's type 1 waters, which have to have a compelling public interest for any new construction. Mr. Henry DuPont came to our meeting yesterday, and I encourage you to watch the proceedings of the Conservation Commission, and explained in detail that the Black Island Club had been prohibited from any expansion. And we'd love your help in seeking that correspondence from the CRMC prior to that. And yet, the Black Island Club, about five years ago, Mr. DuPont continued, did the expansion anyways. And now they have sought the CRMC to essentially ratify what they had done. As you all know, a recurring problem on island is the flaunting of rules and regulations, which I'm not sure any islander likes. If this were to be approved, this would further said impunity and continue to establish that bad precedent that if there are rules and regulations against what you propose to do, don't worry, just do it anyways. Because then people will say, well, it's already there. Let's let them go through with it. So that was our first problem. Then today, we were surprised to learn, and you know, it's partly my fault for not having watched the town council proceedings earlier in May, when a letter was approved from the town of New Shoreham to the CRMC, basically saying, we approve of this application that has yet hadn't been filed yet. We would like to know what was the process that led to said letter. We'd love to get the considered input of the council and town staff on how that letter came to be, why it came to be. Because it also leads us to the question of why even have a conservation commission if decisions are going to be made about construction on type 1 protected waters without seeking the input of the town-appointed body that is supposed to advise the town when such matters come up. Furthermore, we would point out that the Black Island Club has no vegetative buffer zone or CRMC regulations, and that may be a function of it being grandfathered in. We would also point out that the application calls for more motorboats, and it is the considered opinion of everything I heard yesterday at the Conservation Commission that we really don't of everything I heard yesterday at the Conservation Commission that we really don't want more motorboats on the Great Salt Pond. And I couldn't count to you all the times that I've seen people jet skiing or or just skiing and creating all kinds of wakes. Sometimes motorboats just speeding from one end of the pond to the other, from being pointed back to the club and vice versa. So that, those shenanigans, which I'm sure most of you have witnessed or heard of, take place every summer. We don't want more of that. And finally, I do have a question about the privatization of a public good, which is what, in effect, is what would be happening of the club expanding its facilities into the Great Salt Pond. So I also want to inform you that we will be lodging a formal protest before the CRMC. There's a subcommittee that was established. I will be seeking the guidance of Peter Narona's office to cite the applicable law to lodge this objection. And I personally would love for the council to reconsider its May 21st letter supporting what really should be an action of correcting a mistake. So I thank you very much.
Chris Whorple. Excuse me. Ebbets Hallow. I was not going to come here tonight, but I got a an email in the last 45 minutes from Margie Cummings of Planning, which motivated me to come before you. So I am not prepared with written remarks. But I will address you and the town in general about a certain matter that I have brought before the towns before the town. And I have not received recognition or response from anybody in the town other than from Margie Cummings about 45 minutes ago. And my communications with the town were at least two days ago about what I felt was a serious situation. Professionally, I have inspected over 1,000 solar electric systems in my career. I am one of 16 people that write the National Solar Installer and Energy Storage Professional Exams. It's extremely unusual for you to have access to my knowledge. Yet you have continuously discarded it. I brought to your attention a dangerous situation that I just happened to come across. And the town, the taxpayers, should realize the town of New Shoreham that I communicated with has not responded. And I informed them if they did not, I would escalate this because it was that severe. So I have done so. The question for the taxpayers and residents of this island is why the town conducts itself in such a manner. I don't want to be doing this. But my professional credo license requires that I bring to your attention dangerous situations if I have the knowledge to do so. And you will be hard-pressed to find somebody with as much knowledge as I have in this area of technology. You have created a dangerous situation. You have allowed it to create, be created and maintained, and so has the Block Island Power Company. I have informed you, the town manager, planning, and the building office. Not one response, except from planning 45 minutes ago. You need to identify this system to the public and tell them not to come close to it. It's that severe. I have done some remediation on my own to try to protect people, but it's not my job to do that. You need to hire professional people who can do a full evaluation of the system that was brought to your attention and get this thing solved. I am extremely aggravated that I even had to be here tonight because you would not contact me. Nobody, nobody. And so if you don't do this, the onus is on you. If something happens, it's on this town. And shame on you. I don't do this lightly. I would not come here if this was minor. I've shut down two systems in my professional career. This would be one on the margin. It's that bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else?
One more thing. I hope you support the Rec Department's initiative. I'm not going to be here because it really does help the at-risk adult population.
Yes. All right. Item four, consent agenda. We have minutes and we have a public notice from CRMC.
I'll make a motion to pull out the CRMC so that we can have a conversation about it separate from the consent decree.
Well, we it's, if we do that, we have to put it on the next meeting because this is merely the receipt of the letter, which is what we do all the time. It's not an item that requires our action. It's a heads-up. This application is underway.
However, because this is on here as a public notice, I think I should be able to raise the question of what was the letter that Carlos referred to that was sent in May to the CRMC? And can someone explain that?
Although I'd like to say, if we were going to pull this out, discussing something that's already agenda during public comment is not something we normally do. So now we're going to pull it out. Never.
Go ahead, Amy.
Haven't we done this before? We haven't, we've taken things out of the consent decree and put it on and just had a conversation about it.
But why didn't you stop Carlos and say, we should do this procedurally? We should do this.
I was perfectly willing to listen to him under public comment, knowing that it was coming up now.
Go ahead, Amy or Millie.
I'm going to go to the content, if anyone wants to talk process first.
So I'll just say that the times that we have pulled something out was merely to to expand on what that meant. You know, so, for example, we've had, you know, this is a notice, and we've talked about what that notice meant.
Yeah.
And this is a notice for the CRMC. And you can go, we can go from there.
Because technically, the notice that I read talked about an action that is being proposed. And from what Carlos had said and from what the Conservation Commission said, because I heard that that meeting yesterday, this has already happened. This expansion, which is, if you read this, is proposed improvements to the Block Island Club exists. So I would like to have a general conversation about what we know.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's agended as receive correspondence. So other people who might have wanted to discuss this would be here if we had agended it as we are going to discuss this. We didn't say that. We said, receive correspondence, and then we described the correspondence.
Right.
So I'm going to be honest with you. I already told somebody that they didn't need to be here for this because all we were doing was checking off that we received the correspondence. If we wanted to discuss it, I feel like it should have been agended a different way.
Well, as part of the discussion, we could decide to put it on the next, on an agenda for to further discuss, but at least we can just basically do that at this point.
Amy, you were going to say something.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a, just a couple factual and historical travel elements. I'm trying to pull up the letter, which I can't do quickly. But in May, the town council did write a letter supporting the application to CRMC for the Block Island Club's application, which is framed as a application for expansion, for an expansion that, in fact, they had already done without the proper permitting. So yes, it is already there. No, it does not have the ascent that's required to go with it. And there is a little bit of a distinction here between the role of conservation, which is absolutely important. And this is the time in our process where they see those, which is CRMC puts out a public notice and conservation. I don't know if you're meeting on all of them now or evaluating whether to meet on them. But they then discuss whether they would have a response to that. When the town considered supporting the application, meaning prior to its submittal, that context was really relative to the harbor master's input, which gets to the public trust waters. And that's a pretty common situation when somebody is expanding into public trust waters. What have they done to negotiate with the community to preserve some of those rights in a different way? That's pretty typical for CRMC to want to see that already happening before you put in your application. So that's what the Block Island Club was endeavoring to do by engaging first with the harbor master and then with the council as they prepare their application. I will, I will acknowledge that we can write that letter better next time to make clear sort of the separate roles of the different entities of the town in the entirety of the CRMC process. We can, we can do that differently and more clearly. But I don't think that it's necessarily in conflict for conservation to have a different set of concerns that they would bring to the table. So that, that's my understanding of where we are today.
So, but it basically, we should put, I would suggest that we put this on the next agenda because we have till, what, the 9th of October to see if, in fact, we are interested in putting in an objection to force a hearing because the application itself, you know.
Which is identical to what the council saw in May.
In May, is somewhat deceptive because it certainly doesn't say, oh, by the way, we've already done this. And we were told not to five years ago. So, I mean, do I need to make a motion to pull it out and ask that it go on another agenda?
Well, we can, agenda, we're not taking any action other than to receive the correspondence.
Well, no.
If you want to have on a future agenda, whether it's this item or how we manage notices from CRMC, you know, et cetera, that's fine with me. I don't.
Well, I don't think we, I don't think we necessarily are going to come across this again. I think we need, in this particular instance, to not just say, oh, this is how we receive public notices. This is how we respond when we have responded to a public notice that was inaccurate. So, I mean, I would like to then put that on.
I think, I think you're drawing a distinction that I didn't draw. There are two things afoot here. One is, I'm not talking about that document. I'm talking about, we are receiving this correspondence.
Okay.
And we want at a future, you want at a future meeting to discuss this matter.
Yes.
That, I don't, I don't have any problem doing that. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that we adhere to our, to our agenda and acknowledge that there's something we will want to do in the future.
And I thought that's what I asked. Let's accept the, accept the public notice. And I asked if we could then put this on a separate agenda to have a conversation about what this public notice refers to and references.
Right.
So we don't have to pull it out of consent agenda. But I would like to, I asked, do I have to make a motion to say I would like this
No.
public notice to go on a separate agenda?
You want this project? And a discussion, because I, because I think, in addition to this, I mean, I think it would be worthwhile because this is not the first time. I had to go to a meeting with them a few years ago where I can't even remember what it was about, but not everybody knew. So it would be really helpful, I think, for the council to see kind of exactly what the, what the travel is for these, for these kinds of notices as well.
Well, that's a process.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I, you know, I'm waiting for an answer to my question. Do I have to make it?
Did I not just answer it? I'm happy to do it. Let's do it.
Let's put it on the next agenda?
I'll put it on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Fine.
Yeah, that will be Monday this day.
Let's, yeah.
And I think if you look on. Because of me. And I think the ninth is the date anyway, something comes in, so that will give us. I too, I was a little surprised when I saw this. And, but I do, I agree that we're receiving this here, and I think it's worthy. So at the end of our meeting, when we see things for next, the next agenda. So this is something we can put.
Wonderful. All right, I have a motion on the consent agenda. I'm sorry, Carlos. Sure. Yes.
Thank you so much. I would ask, request that when you discuss this item, if you could inform us to of the process for the writing of the May 2025 letter. And I appreciate the distinction between the various town bodies. I'm certainly still learning a lot. But I would like to request that that be treated by the council. Because when this was approved and at council meeting, there was no discussion. It was like, we have a letter, okay, boom. Because we reviewed the town council meeting for that. So I'd love for a little bit of background on that process. Please.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Boards and commissions, we get to make an appointment tonight, Millie?
Yeah.
Can I have, this is terrific. Katie is the, the new administrative assistant at Harbors. I think everybody is thrilled to have her aboard and appreciate her volunteering for this. Can I have a motion to appoint Katie Cast to the Conservation Commission with the term expiring 12/25?
Twenty, ninety days. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And then shall I weep? That Claire Cummings is resigning from the Coastal Resilience Committee. We should acknowledge it, that I know how much time that, that role and those roles on that committee take. There are people here who know that as well. So thank you. And in addition, and we have had some interest in a couple of these. We have, still have Commission Room on Motor Vehicles for Hire, Sewer District, Water District, Police Advisory, and Coastal Resilience vacancies. What is our, item six, set our public hearing date for the noise hearing. What's our date?
The date's going to be October 15th. I just want to point out that the notice that is attached to Clerk Base is missing one, one section. It hasn't been, it hasn't been posted yet. So, and the title has a little bit, you know, a little bit more. But there will be three separate amendments. And once we do get it advertised, it will be on the website and it'll.
Great. Thank you.
I was, I thought, I thought it was me. Millie, is there there's an additional one to this?
That, yes, that is, that is missing one section.
Okay.
I do have, I do have it up in my office, if you'd like me to get you a copy now.
Thank you.
Let me go and make some copies. And meanwhile, it's under section 12/4, measurement of sound. C. They're adding one line to C. It says, measurements need not be taken at the real property line of a complaint of a noise disturbance. It's just for clarification to show where noise, it. Shall I go on? The attorney says that the, that there is no, that they have the leniency to take those noise readings anywhere, but this just does clarify, additionally clarifies that those can be taken in different areas.
Sure, unless Chris wants to go right to his question.
Well, sound level regulations on 12/46, it says.
sound level regulations on twelve forty-six, it says maximal permissible, maximum permissible sound. I didn't know there was going to be a change to C. But maximum permissible sound levels by receiving land use. Now that's common verbiage in every noise ordinance that I found. And it kind of makes sense because if someone's complaining in a residential zone and the sound limit in a residential zone is supposed to be fifty-five and the receiving noise is over that, then it would make sense it's in violation. Whoever, wherever that noise is coming from.
I, I, I.
That typically what most, I mean, that's what all towns are doing.
So that would be for the hearing.
Right. I guess my question is, what is the purpose of changing C if you're not going to change the whole thing?
I, I honestly, I, I read it. I thought there was some stuff missing because I thought what we were focusing on was, uh, the ability to, to, uh, take sound readings at the, at the property line and, uh, the, the outdoor entertainment license piece. And I didn't see one of those and was confused. But that will be published and heard on October fifteenth.
So in the outdoor entertainment license portion of the ordinance, which is article nine, I think, there's a compliance, is it the impression of the town solicitor that the compliance portion in that ordinance doesn't apply to sound that's in?
I don't, I don't think we'd be asked, be able to answer that question tonight, Chris, to be perfectly honest. We're, we're really just always agendated as a public hearing, setting a, but setting a date for a public hearings.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
And what's, and what was the date you said?
Uh, October fifteenth.
That Tuesday? It's a Wednesday.
He says Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Chris.
To the point that you brought up, when we have that hearing, will, is it only these that can be addressed, addressed? Or can the, like the property language, or can that also be addressed at that time too? Are we limited to just the changes that's here?
Yeah, we'll let James do that one.
Right, we can discuss any amendments at that hearing as long as they're advertised. And, um, you know, if we have to have a, a second reading sort of to go through any significant changes, we can do that. Or we can just, um, make some amendments on the, at the night of the hearing.
So like the point that Keith just brought up as an example, would that, that would either, it either fit within, it doesn't have to be re-advertised or may have to be re-advertised depending on how big the scope is, is that?
Right. It just depends on how comfortable we are with the amendments. And if, you know, we feel that it should be, uh, another advertisement, we can do that. If not, we can move forward.
I was sort of.
Can I just, I, I, I thought, and I've been wrong tonight a lot, but I thought that when we ended the last meeting, we asked for a draft to come to us that we could look at first before it became advertised for a public hearing so that we didn't have to advertise and be, you know, be, be dealing with at the hearing, some of these specific questions. I mean, I was surprised to see an ordinance put together. I wanted to, I wanted to see something that we could work off of.
We'll, we'll be doing that at the public hearing.
But that's still, you know, you, you're still at the public hearing. We've already run the advertisement for a couple of weeks. You know, I, again, whatever anybody wants to do, but I thought it would, I expected that we would get something that we could then take a look at and work with and bounce off all of us and people in the audience and then direct the solicitor to finalize an ordinance that would be advertised. But that's my recollection, sorry.
Keith, are you, are you comfortable? Because I, I do remember about the property line that we'll be able to address.
Yes, I am. I am. So can I have a motion to set the public hearing for October fifteenth?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those know, eyes have it. Act on proclamation honoring the Rhode Island State Police for a hundred years of service. Millie, is your preference that I read this?
I think it's up to you.
Has everybody read it?
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those know, the eyes have it. Now we get to, uh, listen to the, uh, good folks at Safe Streets For All. Amy, do you want to kick this off?
Uh, sure. Just to introduce Allison Fletcher and this, uh, the team that worked with staff and the public. Many of you may have participated in these, um, work sessions to develop the action plan that they will walk you through the highlights of tonight. Um, I believe the council has had the full plan presented, um, which is exciting in its detail. But we're going to just do a couple of highlights tonight and they're going to take us through.
Allison, how are you? Nice to meet you or nice to see you. I've seen you.
Nice to see you too. And I'm actually going to pass this to my colleague Zach to do the presentation. We've been working together as a team on this and really appreciate the town staff and working group that's been helping us. So Zach can take it from here. Thank you. I'll be.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. And thanks so much. Thank you. Uh, thanks for taking the time to hear us. I know we're remote. We wish we could be with you, but we are here on Zoom. So we're going to spend just probably about 10 minutes or so talking through the Safe Streets and Roads For All program and the work that we've been doing over the past year or so, uh, on the island and across the entire state. Uh, and then if you do all have questions, we're happy to field those at the end. Uh, and that will be a good opportunity to sort of segue into what comes next for this project as well. So first and foremost, just a little bit of background about what this program is. Uh, the Safe Streets and Roads For All program is a federally funded grant program. It's run by USDOT and the focus is on eliminating fatal and serious injury crashes on roadways across the country. Uh, so the grant that covers, uh, New Shoreham was won in twenty twenty-two by Ripta. Uh, Ripta was the grant applicant and the fiduciary because Rideot was ineligible to apply. And so the goal was really to bring together communities across the state, uh, to work on safety holistically. Uh, and so there were thirty-one participating municipalities and also the state, uh, developed a working group as well that included stakeholders and state agencies that were doing similar, uh, similar work to what happened on the island. So an adopted safety action plan, which is sort of the step that we're coming up on right now, is required for participating communities that are interested in applying for, uh, additional federal funding through the Safe Streets and Roads For All program. Uh, so this grant covered the planning stage. The next stage could either be additional planning or actually implementing some of the recommendations that were developed through the planning process. A lot of the, uh, the program has some pretty rigid statutory requirements. The eight things that you see on the left-hand side of the slide are the required statutory chapters of the plan. And you'll see those in the plan that was included in your packet as well. We followed that exact structure. But really all of those are in service to the goals, uh, that were developed through the process, uh, that we undertook meeting with the community, talking with stakeholders, working with town staff to really develop a plan that reflects the realities of the island and the priorities that you all raised to us. So the goal still here is eliminating fatal and serious injury crashes on the island. But some of the sub-goals are thinking about ways that we can do that that are consistent with the island's character, specifically focusing on post-crash care. So what happens after there's a crash on the island and how we are able to, to treat people? Uh, reducing the frequency and severity of crashes that are involving mopeds and motorcycles. We'll talk a little bit more in a second about some of the statistics, um, but that was a pretty prominent mode, uh, that was involved in collisions. Uh, thinking about ways that we can, uh, reduce speeding, distracted driving, impairment, also things that we saw coming up through the data, finding places for people to walk and bike safely across the island. And then something that we heard loud and clear, both from the public and from stakeholders, was just the underlying condition of the roads on the island, particularly the roads that are owned by the state uh, and how we can get those into, uh, a better condition and to improve safety for everyone who's using them.
That'd be good.
Yes, it would be. Uh, so just to give you a snapshot of the crashes that we looked at. So we had access to data from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Uh, so a period that covers sort of a pre-pandemic, the onset of the pandemic, and then some of that post-pandemic new normal. Uh, and we, we found about a hundred and eighty-five crashes that were reported through the state's portal. Fourteen of those resulted in either a fatality or someone who was seriously injured. Uh, and a hundred and one of those, so pretty much, uh, quick mental math, I'm not going to do that correctly, so I won't try. Uh, a hundred and one of those resulted in someone who was injured. Some of the, the other statistics that are in there is that a hundred percent of the crashes that involved someone that was walking or biking on the island resulted in that person being injured. So it's, uh, pretty rare that you see a crash that involves someone walking or biking that doesn't result in an injury. And that was the case on the island as well. Ninety-three percent of crashes that resulted in someone dying or being seriously injured on the island involved someone who was from out of state, operating one of the vehicles or, uh, one, were one of the people involved. And then about eighty percent of crashes that resulted in someone dying or being seriously injured involved someone who was using a moped or a motorcycle. So we, we really drilled in on some of those statistics to think about what sorts of safety solutions might be appropriate. You'll see a litany of those in the plan itself, uh, but that's just a snapshot sort of high level of some of the statistics. Aside from the numbers, we also wanted to try to understand where crashes were occurring on the island. That helps us really focus in on where safety solutions might be best implemented, where you can get the most bang for your buck if you were to make investments in safety or where to apply for external funding to try to make those improvements. On the left-hand side, you see a heat map of where those fatal and serious injury crashes occurred. Uh, and on the right-hand side, you see a heat map of where crashes where someone walking or biking was injured. And so concentration certainly in, uh, sort of your core commercial areas, your downtown through, uh, that right-hand side map. And then as you sort of trend away from getting off the ferry, where folks maybe open it up a little bit more and get going and really get into vacation mode, that's where we see those worst outcomes on that left-hand side, heading down towards Mohican Trail, up Corneck Road, uh, really folks that are sort of getting away from that, that downtown core and heading out into the island. So what we did with that is we developed what we call a high injury network. And a high injury network identifies locations where there's the highest concentration of either crashes right now or the highest risk for crashes to occur again in the future. And so what you see in blue on your screen is the locations where there was historic crash hotspots. Green is locations where we identified future crash risk. And then red locations are places where there's both historic crashes and there's a risk for future crashes. And so when we put that together, that really helps us focus in on what locations might be most appropriate for safety treatments on the island, uh, and where we can start to focus in our efforts. The data doesn't tell the whole story though, it never does. Uh, and so it's important for us to get out in the community. Uh, we held three pop-up events last year over the summer and into the fall. Uh, we engaged with folks that were on the island for the day, folks that have lived on the island their entire life, heard folks' stories, folks shared with us locations where they had concerns, different stories, um, of just traversing the island. And so we were able to take that knowledge and really marry that with the crash data that we had to try to tell a more comprehensive story of what safety means on the island. We also did an online survey to try to reach folks, uh, who might not have been able to come out to the pop-ups. There was an additional hundred folks who participated in that, which was the highest per capita rate in the state. And so, you know, good feedback that came through that process as well, where folks weighed in, uh, on locations and just generally on what safety meant to them and what they wanted to see prioritized through the plan. And so some of the key themes that we heard again loud and clear were the roadway conditions that came up in many public comments on many different roads across the island. Uh, folks that were concerned about speeding and the speed at which different roadway users were traveling, gaps in safe places for people to walk and bike, education paired with enforcement for things like distracted driving and impaired driving. Uh, and then a, a frequent refrain was the sense of the chaos of the summer and the calm of the rest of the year and how to balance those two competing things, how to think about what the roadway needs might need in, need to be in the summer, but not over-engineering or over-designing them such that they look very out of place for the rest of the year. Uh, and the list on the bottom, I won't read it to you, but the point there is just to say that most of the public comments that we got were on roads that are owned by the state. Uh, and so, uh, a theme that came up multiple times in our work and is documented in the plan uh, is the active role that the state is going to need to take to improve safety on the island and the work that they would need to do, uh, to improve some of the conditions on the roads that they are the owner for. So all of that, we sort of marry together into project development. The plan outlines twelve different locations, uh, where we made some suggestions for treatments that might be appropriate based on the crash data that we saw, uh, based on the local context, the feedback that we heard from the community, some of the types of safety solutions that might be most appropriate, and then of course their feasibility to actually be implemented. Uh, we prioritize those based on a scoring matrix that's included in the plans that you have a sense of what's, what things might be more feasible to implement in the short term versus what might be longer term work. Uh, and there is an appendix in the plan. I think the one that was in your packet was only a hundred and thirty-three pages. There's a two hundred and something page version that has even more appendices. Uh, and that's where some of those concept level designs are included. Uh, so if you are curious, that, that should be on its way to you at some point soon, uh, for an opportunity for you to dig into those a little bit more and see, uh, what some of the recommendations that came out of the plan are. And just to give you a sense of what those twelve places are, they really span the entire island. Uh, but they borrow heavily from the roads that were included on that high injury network and places where we heard directly from the public that they were interested in seeing improvements made. And again, uh, I included in parentheses next to all of them, who is the roadway owner for all of those? Uh, and you'll see in just about every case, it is the state. So it is really a call to action for, you know, continued partnership between the town and the state, uh, to make improvements on these roads and to really do the work that needs to be done, uh, to prevent the worst crashes on the island. Not every solution is going to be location-specific, and so the plan also includes what we call systemic safety treatments. Those are just treatments that you can apply generally across the island uh, and where you would see improvements to safety if you applied them, uh, more broadly. And so, you know, we called out things like roadway resurfacing, opportunities to replace or remove guardrails that were in poor condition, speed feedback signs or curve delineation, different types of signage that alert folks to the fact that there's a change in the roadway character that's coming up or that they might be traveling too fast, uh, for the conditions that they're operating in. And I will say an example of a systemic safety treatment that you all have already been doing on the island is paving the aprons to some of your town-owned roads. You might see that at, uh, different points, specifically down on Mohican Trail, it's been done. Uh, and the benefit to that is that it decreases the amount of debris that's in the roadway. And when you do it across many different intersections, it really allows people walking and biking and driving and riding mopeds for that matter too, uh, to be safer at the shoulder. And so, you know, there's real opportunities to do this work and it's also work that's already being done, uh, on the island today. And then just to sort of transition towards the end of the slides, what happens, uh, after the plan comes into adoption and you all start to do the work of actually thinking about how to implement it? One of those steps is just being transparent about the progress that's being made. That's a requirement of the program is to think about that, uh, as something that you continue to work on going forward. So whether that's reporting when you have crashes and what, what the factors and trends are in those crashes or thinking about what actions are being taken at the local and state level to make improvements on the island. The goal is really to have this not be a plan that sits on the shelf, but to be something that you're thinking about and updating to the, the, the level that you need it to be updated, to match what the changing conditions are on the island. We were able to capture safety at a snapshot in time. But we understand that things change. There's new modes that are coming to the island, e-scooters, e-bikes, e-everything. Uh, and so the ability for you all to continue to update this, uh, is going to help it to continue to be effective for, for changing, uh, safety outcomes. And then, uh, this is my last slide, so I will hand this off to Amy after I give you a pitch on what the benefits of adopting a safety action plan are. There are a few other steps that we're doing on our side as the consultant team, uh, that the town will work with you all on, uh, at a future council meeting as well. But the benefits of adopting the safety action plan are really, I put four different ones, but there's many more. First, as I said at the beginning, it unlocks the ability for you to apply for additional federal funding. The second is that it reflects a commitment from the town to making its roads safer, which I know is a priority, uh, in conversations that we've had with many different folks across the island. And it recognizes the contribution that all of those folks who weighed in on the plan and really helped shape the goals and the work that we did, uh, have made. And then it also, to the point that, uh, we heard earlier, uh, emphasizes the work that the state needs to do. Uh, and that was a core part of our recommendation, uh, and provides a roadmap, we think, for, uh, Rideot to continue to be a collaborator on some other repairs and upgrades that they need to do. So with that, Amy, I'll pass it to you. If you want to talk a little bit about what the timeline for the council looks like.
Sure, we didn't, um, we didn't want to put a resolution in front of you tonight, but give you a chance to digest, ask questions. And then, um, if the council is supportive, I would, I would recommend that we have. If the council is supportive, I would, I would recommend that we have a resolution adopting the plan on a future agenda. Um, again, that becomes a tool as we interact with DOT and pursue other funding. Um, but I, it also does, I think, recognize the work that Allison and Zach and our staff here and their team, um, and the public put into this, which I think was a very thoughtful exercise that, um, considered all the nuances of Block Island in a way that sometimes statewide plans miss. Uh, so we, I think we really appreciate their attention to everything that they heard from staff and the public out here and how they were able to incorporate it. So, but I think they can take questions if you have detail elements you'd like to talk about, or?
Any questions from the council, comments?
I have, I have some.
I have one.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that was fantastic, um, information, but I'm wondering, it doesn't include, like, other modes of transportation that we have, like electric scooters? And is that to be consistent statewide that you didn't include that information? I can't believe that nobody would have mentioned that. Like the, you know, the electric scooters, the electric, um, uh, what are they? Everything?
Yeah.
Yeah, so certainly we heard that through the public engagement process and that's reflected in the plan. Uh, the realities of the data that we have for the crash analysis don't allow us to parse out the distinction between a bike and an e-bike, for example. Um, so that is, uh, certainly a shortcoming, and I would imagine that'll be a recommendation of the statewide process is trying to improve some of those reporting methods that we are able to drill down a little bit further. Um, some of the recommendations that we make would be consistent with being able to safely accommodate some of those modes. There are broader conversations certainly happening at the state and even the national level about, um, specifically e-bikes and e-scooters and their space within the roadway. So it's not, it's, it's not an intentional omission from the slides so much as it's a shortcoming in the data that we have access to right now.
And then in one of your slides, it referred to, um, LED signage. Is that like the lit-up signage? Is that the, the kind that has the lights around the outside or what is that?
Yeah, and let me, I'll pop that slide back up on the screen because we were explicit that it says non-LED signage. Um, so there-
Non-LED, okay.
Yeah, so there are, there's versions of the same sign that include flashing lights, uh, and what we heard was that would be inconsistent with the island's character. Um, and so we just wanted to make a distinction there in that recommendation because there are multiple different ways that that could go. The ultimate implementation for any of these projects is going to be subject to continued work with Public Works and with town staff. Uh, so our work is really just at the, the planning and concept level. So there is an opportunity obviously for, for you all and for staff to continue to weigh in as those things advance further, if they were to continue to advance further.
Thank you.
Zach, can I ask a pro, a couple of process, one process question in particular? Um, uh, and if you, you don't know the answer to that, I, uh, that's totally fine, but, um. To what extent, uh, uh, is there further engagement from the state? So, you know, I'm looking, I'm looking at some of the data and some of it, n-not, uh, not because of, uh, anything the working group has done or you have done. Uh, I, I find outrageous and, and, uh, you would, as a, as a planner or a data person would, would, uh, say, would not use that word, but ninety-three percent of the accidents involving injury were to out of, were, were, were to people from out of state. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, involved someone out of state. So they either could be the injured party or, uh, a responsible party.
Right, okay. Uh, and the rate of, uh, uh, which you said in your report of, of injuries, um, which are due to mopeds and motorcycles? You, you, you haven't seen those numbers before, have you?
Uh, we have them somewhere.
But I mean, but I mean, they're, they're surprisingly high.
Yes, uh, so just for reference, the, the per capita rate of moped and motorcycle crashes on the island is the highest in the state.
Okay, so, um, I guess, I guess what I'm asking, because we, we sit here, uh, and have exactly the concerns that you would imagine, uh, but then have the frustration of being very limited in what our regulatory purview is, what are, you know, what things we can, we can do about that. So on two levels, both the sort of nitty-gritty, here's who's getting hurt, uh, here's, uh, how they're getting hurt. But also the investment, uh, necessary in our roads to bring them up to something that is resembling safe roadways are really fundamentally state questions. So, so that's why I'm asking, like, what? What sort of interaction is there with, with DOT, with local legislators, with legislative leaders on these kinds of reports?
Yeah, Alice. Oh, Allison, I see you popped off mute. Why don't you?
Yeah, um, I could take this one, and I don't know if also, um, Amy wants to speak to the working committees also discussed this with us as well to share their perspectives of where they want to go with that too. But to start, um, Ride Out has been sitting on the statewide working group as part of all of these plans, seeing all of them happen in the like thirty-one communities that are participating. They also specifically reviewed the new Shoreham Plan and looked at all of your projects and provided comment on them and what they would need to consider. Um, should these become projects, um, whether they're done at a state level or through the implementation? Um, so I would say that it's, it's promising that there's already been some engagement and institutional collaboration um, about these pieces, but it's definitely a logistical challenge and can be frustrating, as I'm sure you know from trying to do things on past projects, but. Zach, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, the only thing I'll say is your plan comes at the same time that there's thirty other plans being developed as well. Um, so we're not the only, uh, game in town in terms of projects proposed. So I would say to the extent that you can be a squeaky wheel. Um, that would be, I think, the best opportunity to continue to keep state attention on this. And I know Amy, you've, you and Mike have been having conversations with DOT as well. I don't know if there's anything to tell the council there, but uh, just to, to highlight that the, the work will continue to need to happen, uh, for this to stay on DOT's radar because at some point our work as the consultant team will sunset.
Sure.
I will say it was important, you know, for Mike and I in particular to be able to have this report align exactly with some of our priorities and making sure that pavement condition and guardrails are right at the top of that list. So that this is a tool for us that we can actually use in the conversations that we continue to have. Um, but it's consistent and reiterates those same points.
Yeah, I, I felt the, the distillation of some of this data, uh, the, the, the reason I was outraged is because it was so well-done, Zach and Allison. I mean, I really think it was, it was, it was really good to see a lot of this stuff that we see, that we feel, uh, uh, in, in black and white. So thank you.
Yeah, it's an excellent, uh, reflection of what's going on, but I think it also is good because it supports the AARP program that we've been talking about. It also supports the, um, I don't remember the name of the committee. Nancy Pike is on it, the roadway beautification. Right?
Scenic Block Island.
Beenick, yes.
Yes.
But it supports their work, so thank you.
Are there any other questions for Zach and Allison?
Just, just one more. When you talked about the, uh, the state individuals who are sitting on this committee, was there also any, any coordination with the, with the people who create the TIPS program? The, um, because it was this, it would be this time of year when they deal with roadway projects and requests from different cities and towns. Did they utilize any data that you people have provided at all, you know?
Yeah, so we, um, our, our work was reviewed by Ride Out Planning, which are the folks that developed the tip. Uh, and we actually had a nice sort of circular relationship where we were able to look at what projects they had already programmed into the tip to see if there was overlap with where we were seeing safety challenges and to say, okay, keep doing those projects, don't stop working on those. Uh, but also to, uh, in their review process, many of their comments to us were the next step for this would be getting this programmed into the tip. So, um, there was a nice relationship there and through their review process, they were able to, to identify for us where those, where that would be appropriate.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach. Any other questions? Thank you guys so much.
Yes, please, David. Yes.
David Lewis, Kunamus Road. Um, I was really impressed when I saw the hundred and thirteen pages. At the same time, I was discouraged that I'd have to read it all. Quite frankly, I-
Actually, it's quite good. It's worth it. It's good.
What I, what I did have, take, make, make the effort to do today was to scan the entire document and find every page that had the word "speed" in it. Because I'm one of those hundred that was filled this out and I was really gratified to hear that ninety-nine other people did. And you, the council knows, but the, our guests don't know necessarily that I'm one of that. My, all of my answers into the survey were well-thought-out and brought, get delivered specifically from the point of view of walking on the island roads. Basically, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, except for Christmas. So there are forty-seven pages that have the word "speed" and I just tried to look and obviously speed has been discussed today. But many of the pages also use the word "enforcement" in front of the word "speed." And I've spoken to you in the past about, um, enforcement being probably a significant part of any solution for safety on roads on Block Island. So I would just wanted to make that point one more time. I haven't spoken about speed for two, maybe three years. But obviously it's satisfying to me to see it show up in this report and so many of the town local officials um, participated in the working groups. So obviously I don't, I'm not the only one with that opinion. The last thing I would say was, you know, when, when we look at the funding that we're likely to get from the state in total and the amount of infrastructure work that's outlined in these hundred and thirteen pages. One would have to think that even if the roads were all improved, speed has begun to become a bigger problem than it is to now, is today. And I continue to get back to the point with, that we, we, we need enforcement as a major component of any of these solutions for safety, regardless of the, the method of mobility on the roads, cars, walking, bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any others? Anything else? Zach, Allison, thank you so much for your work. Look forward to, hopefully, maybe, will we do this again?
Uh, if not with us, then certainly with Amy's and others who are more than capable of, uh, talking about this in our stead. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're not doing nine, um.
I have a, a question on nine. I, I know we're not doing, we're, we're, but, um, would it be appropriate for us to ask, uh, James, if he can, for that meeting? Um, see if there's any state law or state regulations rules related to courtesy vehicles?
Yes.
That might be helpful.
No, I think that's a really good, James, did you hear that? We can't hear you.
Yes, we can do that, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you get, you see, you, you understand what Bill's getting at there? Like, what, what is, yeah, what, you know, what is our field of play as, as the town council? Which maybe in addition to what you, you would do in response to Bill, but that's always an important question. It sort of gets back to what we're, one of the things we're sort of tangentially just talking about, which is, uh, there may be stuff, uh, that people are inclined to do that, that are not on the table. Um, so, thank, thank you, James.
Thank you.
Uh, item ten, uh, let's go pickleballing. How are you guys? Thank you guys so much for waiting.
So, back in, uh, twenty-twenty-three, we came before you to request permission to apply for a green grant. That's a, a grant that, uh, helps with recreational activities. You gave us the permission, we applied for the grant, and unfortunately we did not get the grant.
Right.
Um, but it's coming back around again.
Great.
And we'd like to apply once again. One of the stipulations of the grant is that we provide a public hearing. We've already had with the land trust, we've met with the land trust and got their permission once again. Um, but we need to provide a public hearing as well as get permission from the council in order to apply for this, uh, grant. Uh, we're proposing a hundred by sixty-foot slab at, at Ball O'Brien Park between the tennis courts and the pavilion to construct three pickleball courts for public use.
David, on your last grant, um, did, it was a point assessment on the grant?
Yes.
Were, were your points low or did they give a?
We got, we got some feedback. One of the things that we, that Block Island doesn't do well on is servicing neighboring communities. For example, uh, we didn't score highly on that because they don't consider us servicing neighboring communities. I feel like we service a hundred neighboring communities, you know, when we have fifteen or twenty thousand people here and the people I've met coming out to Block Island, you know, to play pickleball, you know, they're from all over. So hopefully we can express that better in the next grant and say, you know, you know, we're, we're servicing a lot of communities.
So there are two things, just a suggestion. On neighboring communities, perhaps creatively you can say you may entertain, uh, tournaments or something, invite people over.
Right.
Maybe something creative you could write from there. And I also noticed that, because it's five points on the one about, uh, this project about serving public transportation and then half-hour bus stops and so forth. And, you know, we responded, we don't have any public transportation. However, we do have the rideshare and perhaps there might be something creative that could be written that way.
Right.
That might help out, worth looking into with, with, um.
Yeah, we're certainly, I mean, we're certainly reviewing it. Um, I'm, I'm getting the help of, uh, Will Young. I don't know if you guys know Will Young, but he's been, uh, he's been in several grants. And, uh, you know, we're going to obviously revamp some of the things that we, we got feedback from the state from about, you know, what we, what we need to score better on. Um, one of the other things that if a town is applying for two or more different grants, that you have to prioritize them. And we prioritize below the Gracys Cove grant that was requested. So that was a, why we're down a little bit on those. So uh, again, you know, some things that we, we-
Do, do you have several grants this year that you have?
I, I'm not sure if they're going to apply for the Gracys Cove, uh, rejuvenation grant. They, we talked about, I talked to Mike Shea about it and he's contemplating it. So I don't know if he's-
He is, and, but he doesn't have his materials ready. So that would be a question for the council. We do have a little bit more time if you want to, um, push that question off, but we will have to make a decision about which to prioritize.
But what you need from us tonight is a motion to approve.
Permission to apply for the grant.
Is, can I have a motion to, uh, approve that? Second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Suppose no, the ayes have. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work you do. Really appreciate it, guys. All right. Mona Helterline.
All right, we're looking at, uh, the financials for August. And overall, the total revenue recognized for fiscal year twenty-six thus far represents thirty-seven percent of the budget. Um, and then the total expenditures are, uh, twenty, at twenty-three percent of the budget. Compared to last year, we're, we're right on track with that, uh, maybe even doing a little better, although there's uh, always some expenditures that are still rolling in and will be applied as they come in with the August activity date. Uh, some things to point out, I will start with pages four to five, which would be other town fees and income. Um, we have, we're seeing our North Light fees. Uh, this is the first year where, uh, we've had a full season, uh, that we've been open at the North Light since, uh, before COVID, I believe. So that's, that's significant. You can see compared to the prior year this time.
Can you give me a page on that or a line?
Uh, pages, I believe that would be page four.
Thanks. Thank you, Mona. Sorry.
No problem.
All right.
So that's, that's nice to see. They're doing a great job, uh, at the North Light. Uh, we see that again. We'll see that over on the expense side, uh, with their, their wages, uh, and increasing wages. Uh, further down the page, uh, looking at harbors revenue, we're seeing the results of the increased landing fees and the, um, mooring rental fees. Uh, so those have both combined, uh, resulted in over seventy-two, seventy-three thousand, uh, combined increased revenue compared to the prior year. Shellfish licenses also are up slightly compared to last year by about 7,000.
Can I, can I go back and ask a question about Harbors showers?
Sure.
Are we really only selling $90 worth of shower tokens per year?
That would be, that seems to be the case, yeah.
That doesn't seem-
We need-
I have only anecdotal information, which is worth very little. But I did work for Harbors for a summer, I think, tagged as well, and I don't think I sold a single token.
Well-
It's, I literally was just sitting here when you asked that, thinking, did I sell one of those? I don't think I ever did.
I think they give them to them in the pond when you're on a mooring. However, in my experience working at the Chamber of Commerce, voters were constantly seeking to purchase extra ones, right? Because they wanted to take another shower before they went out to dinner in town. It, based on the number of people I recall asking me about buying shower tokens, $90 seems very glaringly off. Just-
Interesting.
And if you see compared to the prior year, it's actually more money than the prior year this time.
Right?
Compared, yeah, 20, it was $26 this time last year.
I would wonder how they're paying for that.
Right. Let's see. Moving on, we're still on the same page. I believe we're on page five. And I just wanted to point out the negotiated settlement. That's towards the bottom of the page. And that number just represents the opioid settlements we've received so far. I like to point that out just because it could be a variety of things, depending on.
Yep.
Moving on, page six, State Aid. You'll see that we have, we're reflecting $0 for the hotel and the meals tax. And just as a reminder, that is because the amount that we received in August is actually booked to June. And so that's not going to be clearly showing up on the August financials unless we run those a couple of months from now.
I hope this, I'm just, I'm just curious, this is literally a question out of curiosity. Do you anticipate that with some of the changes that were passed in this legislative session, which I must admit, I still get wrong when I'm when I'm describing them to people, you know, the extension of taxes to certain things, the increase in rates, the do you expect that we'll be slower in getting our money from the state for those things? I'm just curious, like, what your experience has been, not-
My experience has been that the state changed their payment platform or the method that they're distributing. They're using a different website, and the way that it's reported to us is different. We used to have different entries for the different percentages of tax that we got, as well as a separate entry for the room reseller. And now, and now it's just a single lump sum. And there's not currently detail available behind it. They did say, they're not saying that there's not going to be more detail in the future, but for now, that they're-
I don't think it's too bad, like, we're going to get shorted, but it's just such helpful data to, you know, be able to drill down on some things.
State also hasn't published their enacted 2026 budget data for State Aid, which usually gives us some preview of how those new laws would impact things like hotel tax.
Yep.
Those numbers haven't come out, and they're pretty significantly delayed at this point.
Yeah, what's 90 days among friends?
But that'll give us our first estimate at some of those impacts.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry to digress there.
No, no problem. Let's see, further on, pages nine to 10 are the administration, and the only thing I wanted to point out there is that if you look at insurance, that's so we're pages nine to 10, and insurance is the last four is 6,700. And you'll see that we're at 97% of budget. This is not uncommon at all. That line is a bulk of it. 97% plus is just our workers' comp insurance and property and liability insurance. We did increase the budget this year for fiscal year '26, but I expect we'll still end up within the budget by the end of the year.
Great.
Page 17, Harbors. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. Equipment, 7,100. We're at 73% used. That is, a bulk of that is due to having to replace an engine at over $8,000. And that was unforeseen, obviously. Maintenance general, 7,310. We're over budget. And that has to do, we had to repair a pump-out pump on the dock. And it also includes some of the work on Old Harbor Electric that was, that exceeded what we had budgeted for in the capital budget.
Does, is there a, with the no-discharge harbor grants, you know, sort of, some of that's covered under, I don't know whether grant is the right, yeah. Does that at all contemplate the replacement of things like the pump?
I, I don't know if it's, has to be strictly the vessel, or if the pump, which is off the vessel, would count.
Just curious.
But I think it's totally reasonable. I don't know if Kate already has, has it slated for that.
Thanks.
Is the fire suppression system electric in Old Harbor? Is it electrical with the fire suppression system?
Excuse me? Sorry, I didn't understand.
You said electric. I was just wondering if that was the, if that worked. Was it electric? Were you serviced there? That's my question.
Yes, yes. They have been upgrading services pedestal by pedestal on the electrical service. And they've had to install the Fire Marshal mandated fire suppression system.
That's not-
That is not in that number that you're looking at, I don't believe. Yeah.
Yeah, that number's actually over on the capital side. And is that portion of the budget is, has been fully expended. And then maintenance refuse removal, 7,420, that looks like it's over 126%. But every year, we do bill a large percentage back to the boat basin, or they reimburse us for that compactor.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so that represents at least 23,000. We wait until the end of the year, add it up, and then seek reimbursement for that.
So you feel that's implied?
Yes. Yes, I do. The compactor expenses are significant, which is, yeah. And then my only other comment would be for page 22, Boards and Commissions, and that's just pointing out that we have the wages there, North Light, that we're seeing reflected here compared to last year, which were zero, right?
We paid 500 downwind.
And that's all I have. You have any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Where did we stand on this part, Amy or Mona, on the audit?
We are this close to being done. Yeah, it's really just a couple hours of work to get that over the end, and we haven't had a chance to do it. But in the meantime, Mona's getting started on 25.
The, I have one question, and I don't know if Mona's going to be here. In your report, we talk about the repairs on the gym and so forth. Does that, and I know it's kind of crossing over, but does that come out of the bond money, or?
The-
Like, how are we dealing with that, those, you know, dipping out of it? You know, how are we looking with that?
Do you want me to take that? Yep. So they essentially are at the end of both the project and the dollars. You can see in my report that we wrap up a couple little punch list items, a couple things they've added on at the end. But essentially, they are just about finished with all the work that they had scoped. And that will exhaust the 4 million that we've borrowed. There are some additional projects that are happening in the gym, which is why that sort of raised a flag for me that the school is picking up out of their own operating and capital budget. So those are a little bit separate, but in terms of the entire project, that's just about over. Yeah.
And so how much have we eaten down of that?
All of it. They had scoped a project to consume the entirety of the four.
Do you know what that amount was?
4 million.
So we've used, so of, what do we have, borrowing up to, was it?
Oh, the 10.6?
Yeah, the 10.6.
Sorry.
Like, it's easy to chip away and say, what do we actually?
And that's why I don't think of it as 10.6, because we had a very different, do you mind if I divert, Keith? We had a pretty different scope of work when the 10.6 was presented to the voters. And they ultimately chewed off the gym and some HVAC that totaled $4 million, and that's the amount of bonding we actually issued. And so the expectation is not that they will continue to spend 10, at 6.4, but they're going back and reworking their next stage two, working with the educational consultants. And so they'll be bringing a new plan back to the voters for consideration. And the anticipation is that we would exhaust or extinguish the previous authority and replace it with a new authority that matches the new plan. So.
So essentially, we were authorized to borrow 10.6. We only, we obviously only pay for what we borrowed. We exercised 4 million of it.
Yeah, but we're not trying to creep and chip away.
Yeah, I was hoping that. So, but, so the idea will, just so I understand, so the idea will be, we've authorized additional, say, $6 million that can be, but they're going to come back and look at the whole plan and say, hey, listen, you know, what we need to do may exceed that. We want to look at it as one project with it.
Yes, and we really want to present that clearly with a price tag and not play any games.
Great, thank you.
That's what the committee and the construction committee and the school committee are working towards.
Mona, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great stuff. Nicely done. Oh, yeah, for you next, Amy, sorry.
I'll just, I'll just do some highlights, if that's all right. We are expecting new signage and posts at all the CRMC shore access points, which is exciting. It's related to a law that was passed at the end of the session requiring CRMC to make those more visible. So I haven't seen them yet, but they'll probably look different.
Those are the new LED signs?
They- They, they were very receptive when we said, absolutely not. Will you put LED signs? So we get it, we get it. At Thomas, just in terms of landscaping, we have been challenged with the weather because we cannot grow grass. So whenever it starts to rain again, assuming it is not too cold, we will try to grow grass this fall.
Can I just ask, I see we're, you know, we still got one unit that's not going to be ready till the end of September?
That was on purpose. That is for the officers at the academy. So all of the effort went to getting the others painted, outfitted, and trimmed, and then just wrapping up that one last.
But is that Connecticut Valley, or is that our?
No, that's Connecticut Valley, and they're I actually changed how it was presented to me. The representation from the facilities is that it should be completed by the end of this week, but I gave them a little more time.
So they really, they added a pretty substantial extension after, you know, the last time we kind of called them out on getting things done.
Our goal was to get those units occupied. It was not necessarily a priority for us to get this one occupied. We wanted all of our effort onto that one. Well, okay.
And so with the officer of the academy, it's not a crunch, is the bottom?
Exactly, yep. And they're continuing to address both internally and with Connecticut Valley, any punch list items that come up. So we're just making sure that that is entirely entirely wrapped. In Harbors, Katie Cass has been hired as the Harbors clerk, so we're excited to have her aboard.
Are you talking about the new member of the conservation?
Yes. And all license sales and operations have moved back to Town Hall. There's always a little confusion this time of year about where to find Harbors. And then-
Would you mind if I asked a question that doesn't have to be answered tonight, but it feels like for the last couple of years, we've done some rather substantial work on some of the harbor boats? Right? Like last year, the, you know, the collections boat had to be retooled, and this year, we had the big transmission, I think it was a big transmission issue. And I'm just curious whether sort of like, we just got with one of our cars, you know, do you get, how do you gauge when it's time to say, you know what? We ought to just bite the bullet and get a, you know, a new one?
Yes. And I think we have that conversation pretty often in the capital planning process.
Sure.
Particularly around boats, and particularly around those two, the collection and the Marine Patrol. If you think back, Marine Patrol has been on our capital plan for a long time, and we just sort of keep
Yeah.
eking out a new one. I can tell you that, because I know someone who just ordered one, the lead time is about two years, and they're running between 500,000 and 600,000.
Sure.
Which is all sort of in the line with the expectation that we've had. And so I will say, we've always kept out hope that maybe we could cover that with a grant that has not appeared in the last five to 10 years. So it may be that we need to. But we'll talk about that more in the capital process.
Sure, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that it's spiked so much.
Maybe I just noticed it.
It's always been low level. Yeah.
But it has struck me, you know, we had the inflatable rib had to be replaced, and, you know, and a lot of that, I mean, I know I own a boat. This is sort of how it all works, but but I do wonder whether the more modern ones have additional tools that, you know, make it more readily dispatchable for other on-water emergencies, or, you know, those sorts of things, just. Sorry.
It's okay.
Amy, I had a couple of quick questions. I'm glad to hear the mansion beach bathrooms work out. Just for curiosity, they work, they collect rain, that's right. I think that's the idea, the rain supplies the water for them. Have we?
I don't believe that's true.
True, no?
I believe we truck water in.
Oh, we truck it in?
Yep.
I thought there was, I thought there was a thing, yeah, attachment from that end of it, so. So that's, well, it hasn't rained, so I guess we're trucking water in.
Maybe that's why.
Yeah, exactly. The school, would you answer for me? The other question I had was on the dispatch, and the hardware for the dispatch, which I know we had talked about that before, the bullet, the glass inside and so forth. Is there any plans for the exterior of the building? I've had some issues raised about, you know, there'll be no lights, and there'll be no light and so forth, but is there any set plan for that? And a follow-up to that is, if there is going to be any exterior change to it, that will go through permitting, I assume?
Yes.
And historic, whatever it might be?
Yep, and there's, as I say, we're getting back to that project. And going to have a meeting between the chief, the facilities manager, and myself, either the end of this week or the beginning of next, to go through the work plan. Two other things that I wanted to mention, if that's all right?
Please.
Planning and zoning are both going to be launching their OpenGov applications during October, so they'll be transitioning to that platform. We appreciate people's patience and their understanding as that happens.
Yes.
And then Jen's done a huge amount of work to get that ready, which is great. For anyone who didn't see it, there has been an email scam representing the Town or New Shore on Planning Department and asking for payment by wire transfer, which is something we would never do. That is a scam email, and we just want to make sure everyone's aware of that, and-
Do we know if anyone's been victim to that, or?
We don't believe anyone's been victimized. It was brought to our- We don't believe anyone's been victimized. Uh, it was brought to our attention promptly and we're just trying to get the word out. But, uh, yeah.
And I noticed when you're looking at dispatch staff, you mentioned full, part time and per diem. Has that the idea per diem been advertised anyplace widely? Do people know about that?
Uh, it's been mostly word of mouth, uh, through the chief, through other dispatch centers. But we're gonna we're gonna put that in print as well. Um, it's how we've been able to patch together some interim assistance, but we'll take any and all bodies.
For as long as we can get them. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Amy? Sure.
I'm really troubled by that scam. And do we know whether or not the people who have been approached are people with applications pending? Uh, because it was brought to our attention two conservation commissions ago. And if it's random, then it's somebody who has access to Block Island addresses. And if it's only people that have things pending, I'm a little queasy about the level of information the scammer has.
I do believe that particular individual does have has had a recent application at least.
Is that information that someone could get off of open gov?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it's all publicly available through the open gov platform. Yeah.
Right.
Amy, can I throw another plug in for the dispatch? I think, uh, I know even the chief was filling in some of the shifts. I know they're they're looking for people. It's a good job. And I think if anybody knows of anybody, especially coming into the, you know, into the winter months, looking for work, uh, we'll encourage them to apply.
And
Thank you, Bill.
Without overstepping the chief's decisions, I think there's a lot of room for people who may not be available to take on a full time role, but may be willing to contribute in a part time way.
Wonderful. Uh, Amy, do you want to cook off early learning?
I will. So we left off discussions with and about the early learning center during the budget work sessions. And particularly at that time, talked about concerns that seemed to center around communication and the overall governance, meaning the framework of the bylaws and policies and responsibilities between the board and the director. Since then, I think the board has met three times ish, uh, once an executive session. They don't typically meet during the summer months. Um, so they're just getting back into their board meeting routine. I've did attend one of those meetings. I've also met with the director and the president and the town's representative. And we have the president of the board tonight and the director in the audience as well to give us a little bit of an update on where they are so far. Is that fair to say? Okay.
Thank you, Nell. Will you just say your name and stuff? Green light.
Green light. Um, good evening. Most of you know me, but if not, my name is Nell Barnicot. I am one of your town dispatchers and, um, current ELC board president. While I'm no stranger to the microphone, this venue is a little bit different for me, so I will thank you for your patience in advance. We were asked to join this evening to bring you up to speed since last April's meeting. While I don't want to dwell on the past as we can't change yesterday, I would like to acknowledge and move forward. A big takeaway from that meeting was just ask. And we heard you and immediately sent out a survey to all the families, which resulted in great response. A common thread throughout the feedback was communication and more importantly, the definition of what that looked like for our parents. In true Julie fashion, she took a deep dive into researching the best way to make that come to fruition. We landed on a very well known app called Brightwheel. Through the app, parents are able to sign in and out quickly, easily. We're able to send things out that were specifically requested by parents in the surveys. A few examples being teachers were able to send daily photos, potty and napping logs, whether their child is playing well with other children, whether their child had big emotions that day, whether their child ate well, whether their child was a good friend, et cetera. Administration is able to send newsletters, fundraising events, notices, calendars, meeting agendas, et cetera. The app has been a huge success. And parents attending our most recent September tenth board meeting shared unanimous enthusiasm for the app. Teachers and administration also rave about it and we're excited to explore what more it can do. The most important consideration.
Can I just interrupt really quick to ask, um, is the app available in other languages or just in English?
It is not. So.
Oh, but if you're gonna speak, you have to you have to come to the microphone.
Not at this time. Not at this time.
Okay. Thanks.
The most important consideration for any childcare facility is safety. I am happy to report our annual inspections have all been completed and we passed all without issue. This includes DCYF licensing inspection, the state fire marshal inspection, life safety inspection, and the Department of Human Services approved our annual license renewals as childcare center and preschool, as always with no deficiencies. Furthermore, the survey did not indicate any parents feeling uneasy about the care of their child or children while in our center. It was in fact quite the opposite. We have welcomed twenty three excited children into the start of the twenty five, twenty six school year. All is going well as the students settle into their new classrooms. We feel that the survey worked so well that we intend to use periodic surveys to follow up and stay in touch with the parents. We are also excited about our newest board member and interim treasurer who brings with him financial and nonprofit experience. And while there is always room for our, uh, always room for improvement, I feel confidently, especially after our last meeting, that our board can and will accomplish the to do list as a cohesive group. In the immediate future, we look forward to our annual toy boat fundraiser being held this upcoming Monday.
Is that this Monday?
It is.
Great. Thank you so much, Nell. Really appreciate it. Any questions?
I I had a question. Are are you guys a certified preschool?
Yes.
And the teachers are certified preschool?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Sounds like some progress is being made and that's great.
Yeah, and just from the council's perspective, I'm going to continue to attend board meetings to the extent that I can. And I think we'll continue to meet and check in with both the president and the director and the town representative as well.
Wonderful. Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for waiting. Could be seven thirty, could be nine, you never know.
So Allison gets the.
Allison, you're up.
Okay, Allison Carley, Director of Human Services. I've got my first year under my belt, but first busy summer season. What I have found this year especially is that many people bring their elderly parents, aunts, uncles, who wish to spend time in their favorite place, but they need a lot of help. Hospital beds, CNAs, caretakers. I've gotten calls from concierge services down in Florida for this kind of service. And we just don't have the resources. So, um, my biggest fear was that we would take away from our locals and use them in some of our seasonal homes and that definitely happened because of pay rates go up and people get more money. Not a huge, but something to pause and think about as we kind of move along here. The DEM parking pass program was a success. I will say that the surge of requests around Labor Day and Fourth of July were enough to fling around, but I feel like everyone was responsible, didn't abuse it. And I think it worked well. I think we still have a couple more weeks on it. And it was a really nice thing for the island to do for a lot of these people who have to go off constantly to get care, to take their parents out of their nursing homes, to go get their medical appointments, that kind of thing. And honestly, I think only had like two, three last minute emergencies. Um, and my one and only vet emergency, which was good to hear because that was always my main concern about the fur babies. Handled number of medical shed requests for wheelchairs, walkers, crutches, mobility aids. Really did a nice coordinated effort with, I would like to thank Rescue for lift assists and wheelchair transports. The medical center also has been a great collaborator. Um, I have a direct line in with Lori and Sarah. Because while this is a very high level, we have very embedded things that we work together on, which we won't get too far into. I have attached with your report a safe checklist that I developed with Rhode Island Coalition of Elder Justice. They had never had one before and we worked together and it passed through their board. And it's all about private in home hair caregiving and what you need to protect yourself, safety measures when you bring them home. But with initiatives like PACE Rhode Island, which we have been applying for since twenty fifteen, and constantly get denied. This year we were denied because of bad weather and the fact that maybe the boats wouldn't run and they couldn't handle their regulations for within seventy two hours of when they got the request and coming out and making an assessment on a patient. So when we got that, um, and Amy knows, we elevated it up right to Tina Spears, Senator Spears, and she took it to Medicaid office immediately to the director of executive director of Medicaid, who agreed to meet with us. We're still waiting on that. This has been going on for about six, no, well, ten weeks, something like that. I got an opportunity to speak with Senator Reed because we have a personal connection. He spent a Thanksgiving with my uncle, so I wanted to fill him in on that and then shove in a little bit of help there and they actually responded as well and are going to help us with our cause. I submitted a cheat sheet on PACE and what it would do for us. When I first started this job, I heard a lot of we take care of our own. And while I agree, we don't take care of everybody. And this would really help us take care of everybody. And there's some demographics in there that you can look at. Um, we chose to focus on a broader range of people, not just what the census says. So this focuses on more of those seasonal people that would be out here if they came desperately needed for in home help for anybody that would be able to qualify for it. The way the PACE contract works is that they would buy services from Block Island. They say up to eleven jobs. I would say it's more like six to seven, um, lots of part time situations, but I am going to supply you. I'm still waiting on it for you, Amy, but we had a workshop with PACE with myself and Nettie Rose Cooley. And we discussed whether or not we had the infrastructure to support a program like this. Of course, we have to be a little creative, as per usual, and resourceful around structures and things like that where we could have a blood pressure clinic. And while it's it's an option up at the medical center, it's a different kind of clinic. You'd have to serve food at it. So we could have a dietitian. We could do it out of the community center, that kind of thing. But we'd have to put our thinking caps on around the infrastructure of the program. But I feel positive and I hope that this kind of goes through when I need and if I need your help, of course, I'm going to come for it. So that's PACE. Um, the AARP, we're finally, now that I'm out of the summer, we're kind of moving on. And I have the survey in my hands. Unfortunately, it wasn't customizable, but it kind of falls suit with ARP and getting an assessment of what the elderly needs. I will say that I picked a checkbox all the way down to forty five plus. So there's an extra bucket for people that I think should be talking about this for themselves out here. We will be forming an age friendly committee, which will somewhat overlap with the senior advisory committee. So I think we have to have a long further discussion around how they operate together, if they do, kind of thing. But the five goals really, um, they're around transportation and I will talk senior ride in a second. But basically outdoor spaces and buildings, um, social participation, affordable housing. I'm going to push my initiative with the housing board on making sure these, some of these or a percentage of these apartments that they're building have some sort of senior accessibility, because I don't think we've thought about that in the last thirty years and it's really important.
Do you mean accessibility in terms of?
Walk in showers and setup tubs.
Right. Gotcha. I was I wasn't sure whether it was about seniors having access to the apartments or seniors it being sort of ADA friendly.
It's both, of course, but, um, it kind of gets a little bit more into it when you get inside the home bars on the So it doesn't have to be all, but a percentage of them should actually have that kind of accessibility and I'm I'm pushing for it. Support for children and I would love to work with you guys. I have Dorcas, Dorcas International on the horn with me and they want to talk child and safety planning with the schools. Won't get too into it, but, uh, I've been working with the social worker at the school and Dorcas International is a great group out of Providence that helps support immigration services. They also help with adult learning, that kind of thing. But I just felt with the school social worker that we should really have some sort of plan out here in the event we need one. And then transportation. So the senior ride service I feel came to a halt this summer because I was kind of a stickler for the rules. I think we can relook at it. I reached out to the two cab drivers that support the program. One had no invoice for me all summer and the other had a very small one. So my thoughts are, you know, maybe we do a voucher inside the budget. So we hand out the vouchers, kind of like what we did with the DEM parking. This is what you get. You don't get obsessed, but something along those lines and also a ride share. So the cost is shared. Everywhere I looked in the communities out there, they share at least a portion of the ride. So three dollars, four dollars, but maybe the goal is to have some vouchers and this is what we hand out throughout the year and this is what you can use to get wherever you need to go.
Well, I if I could just jump in here.
Sure.
Appreciate your efforts and rating in because I think it was it was out of control and I and let's look forward. But I mean, looking back, it really was. And I think
Sure.
I would agree on that. Um, one of the things I'd like to see, um, as you put this together, if there's a flat rate, let's say, I'll just use a number, say it's ten dollars. Okay, that if a cabbies that want to participate, that's something we might be able to do as a council with the taxi rate of how a ride share rate would qualify from that. So if there's something that we can do from that end of it, bring it to us because, uh, you know, the full thick cab rate, um, I think I think something could be negotiated out. That's a more reasonable on the ride share end of it. So and in turn, everyone would win. There'd probably be more ride shares and then probably we'd get a better use out of it too. So
Yeah.
Keep that in the back of your mind.
Yes, though, and tracking is half the battle. So I think a voucher program would be great. Just like we did with the DEM and the parking passes. So.
But thank you for your efforts on that.
WIC, just because I know it's a thing and I've been working hard at it, but, um, the bottom line is the only way for us to get this out here is if we have an online ordering system with any of these major businesses. I've talked to Belmont, waiting on Super Stop and Shop, but the interfaces don't speak together. The government, it's WIC program, SNAP program, the online ordering does not speak to a lot of these businesses.
You said this is a Nash, this is.
It's not just, and yes, it's not just, I mean, this took a long time to get to the place where I finally figured it out because everybody I talked to is, oh, we don't have an interface. They don't talk to each other. But the good news is is that the Rhode Island Department of Health is working on it. And it may just live as its own online ordering system with people coming and sending their goods, kind of like an Amazon drop ship. and it may just live as its own online ordering system with people coming and sending their goods, kind of like an Amazon drop ship. So it's sorting itself out, but we're just not there yet.
Okay.
And that would fall under the SNAP. Yeah, I mean, I tried, and I'm not done yet. C V S has still offered to work with us from a drop, drop ship standpoint. So if somebody had a WIC card and they wanted formula, they're gonna figure out how to get it to Wakefield, from Wakefield to the boat.
Gotcha.
But it's, it's, thank God I have a retail background because I was, I would have been pulling my hair out. Yeah, I mean, senior programming's moving along. We got our five thousand dollar grant from the state designated grants from the Office of Healthy Aging. I'm, I really do push for more, but they base it off of our population, so that's all we'll get. And I usually spend that with programming, fitness instructors, senior instructors, Tai Chi, peer-to-peer counseling, that kind of thing.
Allison, do you do the food that comes over in those black bags? Johnny cake, is that through your, I mean?
Yes, so interestingly enough, well, not interesting, we have volunteers that shop for us on the mainland. Those volunteers are patients or clients with new perspectives. So there's some challenges with each person who goes off and shops for us, so I don't always get the heads up when something's being delivered. In fact, a good story is Friday, food was delivered, didn't, they told me it wasn't delivered. And I went down to the boat by accident and saw it today, and, you know, it's upsetting. I called the woman who I work with on the mainland, who was strictly all volunteers for us on the other side. Ninety percent of the time, it works like a charm, but there is collateral damage there for sure. But not according to the freight guys, happens every day. They're throwing out food every day.
That's not the case, but I think if there's a communication breakdown, I'd be glad to try to help out with that.
It's more from the crew that's shopping for us. And I sent a note out today saying, I'm so grateful that you guys work with us. We're so lucky to have you do this for us, but I need better communication. So she'll feel terrible tomorrow when she sees it. I just, it, 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 believe me, it kills me too, but.
It's, it's not as often as, as I think it's presented to you. We don't want to have foods for it.
It's all right. I know how to handle those guys down there.
Great.
Looking ahead, hopefully this PACE initiative, I'm looking forward to getting a committee together to work with the A A R P and, um, yeah, Dorcas International schedule come out October twentieth, and I'm working with the school on that and know your rights kind of thing at the library and, you know, every day is a different day. Crisis is always appearing, um, but we handle it really well and working closely with social services on the mainland frequently.
So, uh, I really appreciate the work that you're doing, Allison, and, uh, on a day-to-day basis. And one of the things that I, that I, um, I think is really terrific is that is you have an impressive ability to be, uh, working on broader uh, or more general policy areas and programmatic areas, but also, uh, to service individual, uh, needs and, 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 um, you know, with, with your, with, with your urgency. Uh, and I just wanted to say I really appreciate that. And I, I know it's, uh, it is not easy every day, but, um, you, you know, finding that balance between establishing the program, uh, and being, um, a sort of, um, Mrs. Fix-It, uh, is, I know is challenging, and I appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thanks. It's all about infrastructure. I only want to build infrastructure so this department lasts a long, 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 long time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Allison. So, item fifteen, um, this is to talk about the fact that we need to do a job, right? We're gonna talk about, gotta talk about-
Yeah, I think we can stay in open session, I think, unless the council changes their mind, but, um, we, we could be three months in, uh, but we're also coming up on a year, um, since I started as interim October first. So while we've discussed structure and style and shifting from interim to permanent, that hasn't come with a formal evaluation system or a mutually agreed upon process or performance goals or objectives or any of those things. So I'd like to start working on that, not just for my own evaluation, but also in order to model sort of setting clear expectations and having open communication as I think about performance and goal settings throughout the rest of the transition staff. It should probably start here so that we're, we're setting the right example. And so that includes things like what the timeline looks like, what the approach might be, what the tools are, and then, um, the actual content, the goals, the measures and the evaluation itself. Um, I'm happy to work on some things and bring them to you. I'm happy to work with one or two. I'm happy to have the council take the lead, but I do, I didn't want to not talk about it, and then be three years in, and nobody's talked about what the goals are or how we're doing against those imaginary standards.
Well, that's, that's how we were previously, and I have to say it was wholly unsatisfying for, for me. I can just speak personally. I, I just, um, I'm really glad you wanted this on the agenda because, to me, the best, uh, you know, job performance evaluation is one that's, you know, mutually agreed to, here's how, here's how we're gonna do this, here's how we're gonna measure things, uh, that is, uh, invective, free, and et cetera. So when we started this process, uh, and I'll, I would, I'll, I'll be happy to do this again. It's amazing how much information there is out there via, uh, Google search about, that are sort of publicly available, sort of municipal C E O type, uh, um, evaluations. You know, the, the, uh, the tools, the tools that get used are, are, as they should be, very public, very transparent, uh, in towns all over the place. And I think, um, I think it might be worthwhile for us, uh, and again, I mean, I'll volunteer and just, uh, send it to Millie, send it to Millie and Amy so that they can send it out, but just look at a half a dozen of them, you know? And, and see what strikes your fancy, and you can do the same. Shouldn't, shouldn't be that hard, I don't think. Does that sound like a good approach to you?
It does. Yeah. That works.
Yeah, and with the intent, the intention being that we would sit here with Amy and, uh, go over some of that stuff.
Yeah, I would think, yeah.
Yeah, the format being, yeah.
Yeah, I think we agree on the, we agree on the approach, we agree on the tools, and then in theory, we agree on the goals, and then we go off and evaluate and then reconvene, make sure we're all headed in the same direction or iron out places where we may not be.
Great, I'll do that over the next week. It's, it's pretty straightforward. And it's, I found it really interesting because there's a fair bit of consistency, sort of what the four or five areas are, you know, from nitty-gritty to sort of soft. What's the environment and communications and, and that kind of thing, so, and I, 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 I'm not sending this out to shape anything. I'm just saying it's available. I can do the research.
And I don't think it's overly complicated.
Right.
You know, I think it's-
I agree.
You know.
I agree. I don't think it'll be that hard.
It's the tool used, so I think Amy knows what our expectation by choice and direction. And I think it's, um, you know, as, as a, in a positive way.
Yeah.
Great.
All right. We have one item for a future agenda firmly.
The second one, when we were talking about saving roads, it occurred to me that, uh, at one point in time, the, the lines on the, on the right-hand side of Fort Neyro, that Roman Beachhead, left a couple of feet between that and the, and the edge of the sand. And that seems to, you know, the sand is all prepped in over the summer this year. I was just wondering if, uh, you know, the public works could take a look at that and see if they could, push that sand back because it gave at least an area where you could, all the walkers could kind of, you know, a little bit off the road. But now they've lost that area.
I have a couple of things. When I had talked to, I'd asked about putting the, the transfer station on the agenda. Keith and I had talked about it, and, um, I think it's, and Keith had mentioned that it might be more appropriate for work session. And, um, so I'm hoping on that, it's at the seventh or eighth that we have, that we could put it on the work session there. And I'm not looking for the staff to do any work. I think it's more for us to, that we can kind of talk about, you know, hey, you know, to put some direction there. So I don't want the staff to be expected to go out and do a bunch of research or anything at this point, but we can kind of talk about what's there, what options we might have, um, hopefully in that work session. And then the other one I had was, um, I'd like to see us put back on our agenda the rental cars. And, and when I, I feel like we, and I say we, including myself, we'll sound that. We've identified what the problem is and our frustration, but we haven't identified what are our options for a solution. And I think the, the-
That's one of my main skills.
Yeah. Well, um, I, I, I put that, I put that on myself here also, because I, I do think that, um, you know, where, where we were before, we're gonna end up with fifty cars in town, as frustrated as we were before. And I think that we need to, I mean, I'd like to look at whether we can license them or not. If we can, great. If we can't, we can't, we put to rest, but I think, um, we need to, uh, throw it on agenda and talk about what we can do from that end of it, you know?
Well, James is on that anyway, so he's gonna give us some options-
Yeah.
-by our next meeting.
Yeah, James, some, some, just sort of refreshing your thinking on that before we, uh, before, I can't remember. And this is a good thing. I can't remember whether this is a James or a Nick project. But, uh, obviously, we gotta be, uh, well armed and well informed on, uh, the, the statutory underpinnings too.
And we've looked into both the courtesy vehicles and the rental vehicles already. We'll do it again just to be ready for the next meeting.
Great. Thank you, James.
One more. Can you give us a little bit more on the, um, the e-vehicles, Stu, if you have anything?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Trista.
Thank you.
And, and at some point, since we never got around to it before the summer, can our, can our moped committee meet-
Yes, yes.
Over the fall and maybe pull out the old moped.
That is, uh, for the record, that is entirely on me. Just, I just want to say, I just want to say, I don't want to-
We could, we could almost set that date. When are we gonna have our, our review for post-summer? When is that scheduled? Usually with Rescue and, uh, it'd be nice to have some of that information.
Yeah, well, let's have it early October, right?
November fifth.
But we should try to do that before, after that meeting, we have all that stuff.
Great. All right, can I motion to adjourn? Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.